Are we ready?
We are ready.
Okay. Hello.
Hi, President, Council President Garboden, it's Mary Engelke. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
All right.
That it?
Well, after you call the meeting to order, I can go ahead and hand over the duties of presiding over the meeting to you.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting in North Bend City Council regular session on Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-four at seven o'clock. And will everybody join me at the pledge of allegiance?
All right, thank you, Council President Garboden. I am still feeling under the weather tonight. And so I will go ahead and hand over the duties of presiding over the meeting to you. I will still be listening and participating online at a healthy distance.
Sounds good.
All right, Rocco.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Present.
Council President Garboden.
Present.
Counselor Go.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Present.
Counselor Noda.
Present.
Mayor Engelke.
Here.
Okay, the first order of business on the agenda is ceremonial for National Library Week two thousand twenty-four proclamation, and I believe our library director can read that. It's called.
You have to read your own proclamation. Congratulations. That's a first. You're special.
I'll try to do it justice. Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are on life's journey. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. Whereas libraries make choices that are good for the environment and make sense economically, creating thriving communities for a better tomorrow. Whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. Whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Therefore, be it resolved that it is National Library Week, April seventh through thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business is the consent calendar. You reviewed it last night. Do I have motion?
I move to accept the consent calendar after then.
I've had a first and a second. Any discussion?
You don't have discussion on the consent calendar.
Why not? We like to talk. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Number four is public comment. And thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observers from Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking notes of action if needed. We just have the two. Steve Knight.
You get to go first, right?
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Appreciate you giving me three minutes. When does it start?
Continue to start.
Okay. All right, so I did submit some pictures and my comments, so I'm just gonna go ahead and read the comment that I submitted, and then I'll just finalize that with a few other words. So the Ingles Furniture Distribution Center is located at two thousand Harvard Avenue. Since July of two thousand twenty-three, we've had our fences cut twice, two catalog converters cut out and stolen. And most recently on four or five of two thousand twenty-four, so last week, at five AM, a man climbed over our fence and stole a mattress. Those three documented incidents have cost Ingles Furniture twenty-five thousand dollars in hard costs. My staff down on Harbor picks up trash and human feces on a daily basis left by the campers on Harbor. The total traffic was relatively calm over the winter, but now it's picking back up, just like it did July through September when the weather was nice when we first set that as a designation. The Harbor North Bend Boardwalk area was a destination for locals and tourists just a year ago, and now the only people you see down there are the houseless enjoying the park and the amenities that the city property provides. Officer White does a good job keeping them moving on days he's on shift, but when he has days off, they just linger with all of their belongings like they did this last weekend, unfortunately. I've witnessed weekends becoming full-time for campers like last July. The boardwalk was one of those, one of our treasures. Now it has become an eyesore. I sent pictures and a video I took last Friday and Saturday. I support North Bend leadership, but I did speak in front of council last summer and agreed to share my experiences and observations in regards to Harbor. I'm asking you to consider confining the designation location to the city hall and possibly the fire department, removing Harbor from a designated location. So nine months of me observing it all the time because it's in my backyard, as far as our distribution center. It's very evident that there is a percentage of people that you can tell respect the area. They come in, you know, at eight o'clock and they're out of there by seven. They don't leave trash. You can tell that that's like, that's why we're doing this, providing a space that they can rest and shelter. And then the other percentage are the people that come in early, leave trash all over the place, don't leave at seven AM, and continue to linger and then take advantage of situations where they know Officer White won't ask them to leave. Also, they're the ones that, we have one person that consistently poops on the sidewalk, even though the city has provided, you know, a Santa can that's cleaned regularly. But she poops on the sidewalk. We have her on tape. I did not send that to you, but we have that on video also. And so those are, those are the people that, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so those, those people are the problem childs. It's always the, it's the, it's the one bad apple, right? But I mean, North Bend, the North Bend Boardwalk Harbor, that's one of the jewels of our area. And I know that you all feel, feel that way and recognize it, but it's become not a jewel anymore. And that's sad because I don't think our, our, our citizens feel comfortable going down there. And that's unfortunate. So, all right, so what I'm, one last ask is I would, I would ask that you please put it on as an agenda item in two weeks or four weeks to reevaluate that particular location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Castleman.
I'll send one of these in cyberspace to Engelke up there. I'm here representing the Coos County Citizens Council. My name is Chris Castleman. I'm gonna read a letter that we drafted and signed at a meeting we had about two weeks ago. We just haven't felt heard. A lot of this came together about the Deveraux Center, but it's more than that. We felt like we didn't have a voice. We felt like we would say things over and over, but nothing came of it. So we kind of formed our own council and we, we had our first meeting two weeks ago and we're having one tomorrow. We're gonna try and have it be a regular thing. You guys are welcome to attend. We had a Coos Bay City Council guy there and one of your council members showed up as well. Trying to be productive and not like come in here and complain. I'm trying to offer solutions, so. This one's about the Deveraux Center, so why am I here? Because that's in Coos Bay. Well, because you guys a couple of weeks ago had a some, some voting with the financial aspect of them give it, getting a grant from the homeless money, so. I know that Mayor Engelke and David Milliron sit on the homeless advisory committee for the county, so this letter is about that as well. I'll get into it, but it's kind of a mindset, like we're asking the mindset to change. We'd like, you know, we're not here to bash homeless people or, you know, beat people up who are down on their luck. We're here to find ways to not enable the bad people that come out of that group, the ones that are actually committing crimes, the ones that are defecating outside businesses, the ones who are being a problem. We're not here to like beat up homeless people. We're here to make sure that that sort of stuff is just like not tolerated around here, and those bad actors will move along somewhere else because I don't think you want them in your city. So, to the City of Coos Bay, City of North Bend, County of Coos, and the Board of the Nancy Deveraux Center, the success of our community is dependent upon the willingness of individuals and organizations to hold themselves accountable for their actions and in some cases their failure to act. The Nancy Deveraux Center was once a blessing to a community in need, and while they still may have good intentions, the current management style has turned the organization into a center of light. The Deveraux Center mission statement speaks of strengthening and improving relationships with appropriate community services, local government, public safety partners, and our neighbors. It is our hope that they take considerable strides over the next few months to improve their relationship with their neighbors, not only through words, but through decisive action. Here are four solutions we urge you to implement immediately. Hire a security guard or company to keep the property free of drugs, prostitution, and loitering after hours. May I, I appreciate it. Seize the handouts of free camping gear that your clients illegally use and then abandon in our backyards. And number three, implement a program to help clean up your client's abandoned property from neighboring properties, sidewalks, and your neighbor town of North Bend. Require full state and federal background checks for potential housing clients and deny acceptance to any applicants with active warrants. These are not complicated or unreasonable requests, and we demand that you take them seriously to avoid further actions to shut down the Deveraux Center entirely. There are many organizations in this area addressing homelessness and mental health who have proven themselves to be successful community partners. If the management of the Deveraux Center is unwilling or unable to cooperate effectively with their community, then they no longer have a purpose here in Coos County. Accordingly, we demand that the City of Coos Bay, City of North Bend, Coos Health and Wellness, and the Coos County Homeless Task Force seize all current and planned partnerships with the Nancy Deveraux Center until they have implemented the above suggested actions at their Empire and Coal Bank locations. This includes the sixty-seven thousand dollar per year that Coos County pays the Deveraux Center to rent three pallet homes. This also includes the one point five million grant money the City of Coos Bay and City of North Bend have been trying to give to the Nancy Deveraux Center for expansion programs. We care about our neighborhoods. We care how they look, how they smell, how they sound, and how safe they feel. We are not against giving someone a hand up, but the practice at the Deveraux Center of giving handouts has not been successful, and it needs to be reorganized if it can and disbanded if it cannot. And then there's a paragraph about what the sentence in council is, but I don't want to waste any more of your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other public comment? All right. Now we get into the media this side. Oh, public hearing, reunion, potential voters. Now is when I read the script? This is the thirteen eighty-five. Okay, this is the time set for a public hearing to declare eighteen, thirteen eighty-five Bayview Avenue as a dangerous structure, which is resolution three, three, four, four. At this time, I'll open the hearing. Are there any counselors that have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contact to report? Seeing none? Will the staff please prevent, present their report quickly?
Council Chair, members of the city council, in your packet, you received a report with pictures, photographs, and statements regarding the structure that we're discussing right now is thirteen eighty-five Bayview Avenue. This structure caught fire in two thousand nineteen. It was, although it took some time, it was secured. It's been broken into several times since then. Hasn't considerable amount of complaints from the general neighborhood just because nothing has happened to the structure, and it actually, we go by the IPMC, the International Property Maintenance Code. This one, as far as evaluating a dangerous structure meets six of the eleven points listed in the dangerous structure criteria. The owner of the property was gonna fix it for several years. He's passed away, I think about a year and a half ago now, and his son owns it now. He's aware of this. We have contacted him and talked to him. But regardless, as we have stated in the past, if we don't deal with this, we, we haven't dealt with them primarily because we didn't have the money to follow our bluff. We now have the money to follow our bluff. Should somebody not abate their structure? So we're doing a concerted effort to chase the structures that were identified before city council about a year and a half ago. Again, this meets six of the eleven criteria for a dangerous structure. Any one of those declares it a dangerous structure. You'll be hearing potentially testimony. We posted the property, published it in the newspaper. This is a time for public hearing, so there may be testimony regarding the structure, but that's a staff report.
Thank you. I will now open the public testimony portion of public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to the members of the council staff. There's a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state their name, address, their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of declaring the building located at thirteen eighty-five Bayview Avenue a dangerous structure? Seeing none? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will now close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for staff?
Thank you for the.
There's no further discussion. I'll close the public hearing at this time. I will now entertain a motion.
I move the city council, after considering the testimony presented, recommend me to approve, wait, are we that far?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move that the city council, after considering the testimony presented at the public hearing, recommend the approval of resolution three, three, four, four, which declares the single-family residence at thirteen eighty-five Bayview Avenue as a dangerous structure.
Okay. Heard a first and a second. Now can I have the session? Hearing none? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution carries. Now we'll go on to the next one. Next one is resolution number three, three, four, four. Yeah, now we have to actually do it.
Oh, wait, I think.
I think it did, but.
Did we successfully?
No, I think you have to say, I move to approve resolution number three, two, three, four, four, which declares the structure and property located at thirteen eighty-five Bayview Avenue as dangerous. And to all our staff, proceed with abatement measurements as outlined in resolution number three, three, four, one. Second.
Heard a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we're done with it. Okay. That was fast. That was fast.
Yeah. So because you're gonna do this multiple times, so the public hearing is just that. It's a public hearing. And then you go into your action item, which is the resolution. And so, yes, there was not a required motion for the public hearing. You simply have the public hearing, open, close, etc., and then you move on to your next agenda item.
But I think we.
And you'll be doing this again in two weeks, too. There's more properties coming.
Well, it might not be here. Okay, on to the next one. This time set for a public hearing to declare two, five, zero, two Everett Avenue as a dangerous structure, which is resolution three, three, four, eight. At this time, I'll open the hearing. Are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contact for the counselors to report? Seeing none? Ralph, you're back up.
Council Chairman, members of the city council, I'll forgive the original spiel, but basically this structure meets four of the eleven criteria within the IPMC section fifteen. It has been, again, this happens to be a deceased occupant at this time, although there are family heirs, some of them have stepped up. It has been the subject of nine visits since Ms. Gavara passed in two thousand twenty-one. Nine visits, latest on January ninth of this year, breaking and entering. And again, that's just one of the major criteria in there, but it still meets four of the eleven. Therefore, staff recommends you hear testimony on this structure, and if you feel it meets the criteria, let us a dangerous structure.
Thank you. I'll now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council staff. There's a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of declaring the building located at twenty-five zero two Everett Avenue a dangerous structure? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I'll now close the public testimony.
Wait, we got an hour left.
Oh.
I have a question. It's neither for or against.
Come to the table, save me recorded. Thank you.
I'm Chris Castleman from Coos Bay. I guess I just had a couple of questions. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but like, are these taxes still having their taxes paid? Are the, sorry, are the properties still having their taxes paid? And then the other question would be like, what happens after they're deemed dangerous? Like, does, do you guys take possession of the property? I don't know, if you could briefly.
If we did the abatement, we would put a lien on the property.
Okay.
Properties here, so we'll get our money back.
Okay, are, are taxes being paid on these properties by the landowner?
Yeah, this is aside. It's not a tax lien. It's a lien.
Okay. Well, then I guess.
Ralph, have a comment.
I can't answer that.
Okay.
Thirteen eighty-five, I believe, is up on taxes. Twenty-five oh two is believed put by about four years. It's been seven years before it was on hold.
So my only comment would be it, it's just like weird to take someone's property that they're paying taxes on.
I'm not taking anyone's property. This is not a taking, and so let's clarify that. This is an abatement. So we are going to remedy the codes and put a lien against it if they do not take care of it themselves. And so for the benefit of the council and the public, this is not a property taking. This is to put them on notice to fix the property and remedy and abate the hazardous conditions. And if they so choose not to, the city will, and the city will put a lien to recoup its cost to get the property in compliance. I just want to make sure that we're all clear that this is not a taking.
The resolution gives a hundred and eighty days to repair.
That's correct. That said, Madam Chair, Ms. Chair, this is a public hearing, so it's to receive, not to have dialogue.
Okay.
So.
I appreciate the, the opportunity for dialogue because the questions help. So just to clarify though, because you said, so if there's a lien.
Oh, don't, we're not gonna have a discussion. I mean, if you have questions, you can talk to staff.
Okay. Well, I guess then my understanding from the answers I was given was that, yes, if they don't take the steps to fix whatever you deem hazardous, that a lien would be put on the property and it would be eventually taken if, if no steps are taken to change what's happening on the property.
That's incorrect.
So like I said, this is not, this is not a time for that.
Feel free to follow up with me, Chris, up gladly.
Sure.
Let you know what the answers are.
Well, without any further clarification, it's hard for me to understand what's going on during the process. I'm a pretty smart guy. I guess maybe I should have done my homework. Is there more to this, or is this like a done deal when you guys vote for this, or are you not allowed to answer a question?
Well, depending if we ever get around to dealing with resolution three, three, four, eight.
Okay. Well, I'll just go back to, it just seems weird that if someone's paying taxes on a property, they might be a really shitty neighbor and have a bunch of problems with their building or whatever's going on. I get that, but taking someone's property seems weird. He's gonna say it's not taking. I don't understand it because it's not being clarified, but point taken. Thank you.
For the benefit of the council and to make sure everyone's crystal clear. They have a hundred and eighty days to make the repairs and get in compliance. If they don't, the city will engage, make those repairs, fix the property up, put a lien. That is not a taking. When and if the property ever changes hands, sold, foreclosed, whatever, the city's lien will be paid off. It's very much like when you go in and buy a property. If there's a lien on it, it has to be settled, a closing. A taking of a property is eminent domain, and this is not what we're engaged in. And for the benefit of those on the recording, this is not a taking. This is basically the city giving them a loan if they don't take care of it and improving their property, which would increase the value. And so when they sell it or it changes hands, then and only then would the lien be settled. So I just want to make sure that we're all crystal clear, and maybe we can put that in future agenda items so that there's a little statement there to explain.
Okay.
Okay, we did all that. I'll now entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number three, three, four, eight, which declares a structure located at two, five, zero, two Everett Avenue as dangerous and to proceed with the abatement procedures outlined in resolution number three, three, four, eight. procedures outlined in resolution number three, three, four, eight.
Second. We were closing the, this is public hearing part, so we have to close the public hearing, I think we did.
It's not on my script, but.
Says, if there's no further discussion, I will close the public hearing at this time.
Oh, 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 you're right. Public hearing is closed.
There you go.
Now go. What she said.
Yes, repeat.
Okay. Had a first and a second, no discussion, any discussion?
No.
I I believe that this is entirely the the proper thing for the city to do to keep housing in good repair and to prevent repeated numerous calls on on properties that are disrepair or the owners have passed on. And this is taken because that is an effective nuisance that takes up a lot of the city's staff time.
It's also dangerous for the neighbors, there, you know, this information is in our packet, which is online, so you can look. But as Counselor Nordoff was alluding to, it's not a small matter for the city to look at a property side that something needs to be done about it. There's public safety, it's not just about beauty. There's years of non-compliance, there's users of danger to the other neighbors because of what that property may attract. So it's with no small mind that we do this, and it's not about taking the property, it's about bringing the property to a safety standard. And then in the future, if the property is ever sold, we may, we never, yeah. If it's sold, then we might recoup our losses, which we have to save for, to pay for them, so it's not a taking.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, I've had a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution three, three, four, eight passes. Okay, next thing we're on the agenda, oh, North Bend Public Library vestibule door replacement, award of contract. You guys talked about this last night?
Oh, yeah.
And motion?
Oh, yeah.
I move to award the contract for the replacement of the vestibule doors at the North Bend Public Library. Tommy Yuski contracts construction for the total value of seventy-one thousand eight hundred, eight hundred, eight hundred, no, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars.
I have nine hundred ninety-nine.
Apparently my brain.
Oh, okay, okay, I I'm looking and you're saying, you keep saying eight, ninety-nine.
Eight.
Okay.
I'll say.
Several times apparently.
Any discussion?
You just need a chalkboard.
Spoiler alert, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None.
Thank you, that's, I think we're about to have to get Yuski to kind of buy a hundred.
I can do that. Okay, was there any action resulting from executive sessions?
No, sir, no executive session.
Okay. Well, the next item is the city administrator report.
City administrators' report is published online, our website, social media, distributed via email, and copies are in your box. Let's hope to be short.
Okay, that that'll work. Matt, you already, that's your. Okay, do I have any committee reports?
One, Special Events Committee, Matt, again, last week, we met with Stephanie Wilson, she introduced us to Melissa Rice, who's her right-hand manager, helping her out, she's gonna work with the July Jubilee for the lending we have given to that. There's lots going on for the Jubilee, the mall is stepping up and they've got a ton of stuff going on down there. So it's carried forward still, and I get to be the one to order to get you guys to pay for it.
Okay.
I don't know about that. That wasn't part of the deal, was it?
You don't get involved with this thing? Get your checkbook out.
Yeah, that's what he's saying, isn't it?
We're gonna have cake for the whole county. Okay, any other committee report? Council comments, we'll start with Counselor Norton.
Ron Wyden put out a statement this week fairly long, it was a page in length, and he is interested in taking some government action against hedge funds paying cash for housing and being a heavy player in purchasing housing so that the prices are kind of inflated. So he's looking at that, and I I thought that was pretty interesting. I I'd read a little bit about it earlier, but this is, this is from our center. So that's, that's my comment.
Counselor Schultz.
I just would say that if some, if you haven't watched the U R A discussion that we had last night, it was really informative, and I think that it is kind of a complicated process, so if you have time to go back and watch some video, I would recommend that. And then just a shout out to the fire department because I saw them today, and they did a great job, so it's always lovely to see you, so thanks, even if you're working on it.
Counselor Gall.
Well, I think Schultz made a good comment, there, that, that, that spiel we had last night on urban renewal opened my eyes quite a bit on how it actually worked, so. And then I just want to touch bases on public safety, I know the cops are out there trying to help with the situation. And and I see them every day, I I hang on the other end of Harbor Street at the put a California, and I, I see a lot of what what Steve does and and you know, they, they're, they're down there a lot, but anyway, touching on the cops and then Browning them had a fire last night, it sounded like once again, North Bend fired, they did a really nice job getting in and knocking a fire down the house, so that's all I got.
Counselor Hamilton.
Again, touching on Barb off that, last night's U R A presentation. And so I've been talking to a few people about, you know, when they started that thing back in ninety-four, and the size of the city and the economy at the, at the city at that time. And the changes we went through in the last thirty years, because we're thirty years from it. And I, I think back then it was a really smart decision, I know a lot of people don't understand the U R A and they think we're robbing taxes to do whatever, but that's not what's happening. And I think it was the smartest thing that they did at the time, because now we're this far thirty years later, and there, you know, some of these places that we've done projects and stuff would have never happened. If if it would have hit us now, when we hadn't had U R A building up till now, I mean, what would the city look like? So another thing I wanted to bring up was, I know we talked about the community center, they had an event there Saturday, the pinwheel, or the thing on child abuse about, you know, bringing it to everybody's forefront. And I happened to attend that event, it was really good, they had bouncy houses set up in there and kids everywhere, and it was, it was a good event, they had two trucks up there. So another reason why I like the community center, you know, it's a subject, but I'm totally for it, and I think it's a good thing that here in North Bend, we have one of the only facilities to host something like that. And it does a lot for the community and helps a lot of people out, so that's what I also know about.
Counselor Schultz. Okay, so I really appreciate writing this up. The ideas presented, you had signatures on it, to me, this is how ideas from the public need to come forward, you can. One of the things we learn about being counsel is that when people consider you to be their counselor, meaning you have the same ideas, and they leave it to the counselor to bring us ideas, that means that the counselor, the counselor can't do your work, we need the public to come forward with what they really think, we need people to come and say, we're a group and this is our unified opinion, and it needs to be clear. It can't be accusations or anything like that, it needs to be idea-based, and so this is great, and I also really appreciate the content in particular, so thank you. I want to thank Steve and I for coming and talking about the camping Jordan and stuff. You know, we really need small businesses, just they need to be able to thrive, you know, that, just thinking about the twenty-five thousand dollar loss on that business, that's huge, that brings them so much closer to the red line. And so I know that, I know that our public safety and city administration have been working about what to do in immediacy, and I look forward to the discussions that we're gonna have that we do at our level, so thank you for coming and speaking on that. It's never fun on something like that, and I'm sorry it's happening, and all of us, and say that, we're sorry to that. I want to thank Mayor Enke P for staying home because she's ill, thank you. I don't want to clear anything either, and I want to thank Pat and I want to thank Counselor Gall, Counselor Schultz, and Counselor Arvotin for leading the charge, thank you.
Counsel, Counselor Garbodin, can I make a comment or you cut me off?
No, I was just gonna ask you, what what's your comment?
I also would like to say thank you for running the meeting tonight, and to Counselor Gall last evening, I've tried to just work through what I thought was allergies over the last two weeks, it's not allergies, but I'm on the mend, so I appreciate it. And I do appreciate the public comment this evening from Castleman and I, and I think all of us on the council are frustrated with those who are not abiding by what the camping ordinance is. So I know we've discussed before, once we had put the camping ordinance in place to have the police chief come in and give us an update, so that might be really timely to put that on the agenda in the next couple of weeks to hear from them on how things are going from their perspective. I also want to remind everything, remind everybody that we're dealing with some of the laws that have been pushed down on us with the mandates in the state, so I will be watching very closely later this month when I know Grant's pass has challenged some of these laws, and those are gonna be decided at the Supreme Court, I believe we'll be hearing them, so it'll be things that we, I know our council will probably be very interested in hearing about what is next with that, so it's unfortunate that we are in some of these situations, and it's not something that is wanted, but I look forward to trying to figure out solutions as a community. So that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And I have nothing, so we'll close the meeting. Now can I open into the urban room? Okay. Call order this meeting of North and Urban Room Agency for Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-four at seven forty-two. Suppose we have roll call?
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Garbodin.
Here.
Commissioner Gall.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz, present. Commissioner Nora. Present. Chairy Solke.
Actually, I went ahead.
Up here.
Okay, public comment, do we have any public comment? Okay. Urban Renewal Agency consent calendar, I guess I'll give this to the administrator.
You have before you the U R A minutes and the acknowledgement of the bills for March twenty-fourth, the minutes are from March twelve. Simply entertaining a motion then, on behalf of the council to adopt the consent counter as presented.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to adopt your consent counter as presented.
My second.
Have a first and a second, is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Consent calendar carries. Executive Director report.
We have quite a bit that's brewing, we have the new sandwich shop that should, if all goes well, open next week as a soft opening. We expect the brewery to do a soft opening next week. You'll get something via your email. We also have a number of Urban Renewal Agency facade grant applications that are in, one for the hospice location here across from the annex, and so you should see that on your next agenda. And those are some of the highlights, there's quite a bit buzzing and happening in and around downtown, if you see quite a bit of the activity. And so we've got permits coming in or have already come in for a lot of cool projects, so investment, Bagatz Investment. And on the soft opening, you'll get to see the absolutely spectacular and beautiful patio that was a project that our product works director took on with his staff, and I actually got to see it for the first time last week, and it's just just incredible night and day, it's night and day. And so, and so all of that is all under lease agreements, and so inside of the brewery, they've corrected a lot of things like walls that were taken out without permits now are walls. And the salon has moved out, so we'll be working to renovate that. And since there's not a tenant there, we very well may just check the standing law and potentially sell it or lease it. Depending on what the state law says about how quickly we can flip a piece of property, but we'll see.
Where's the sandwich shop?
Right next to the bay cleaners.
The old men of training. I guess we're done.
We have to adjourn, but yeah, a motion to adjourn is always in order.
Really?
By Roberts Rose Water, yes, sir.
Who cares? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
They just can't challenge it.
No, we're just.